All right, let's go ahead and get started. If you would, please stand for the invocation and the prayer.
Praise be to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we gather tonight again in this setting. I pray that you would be with us. I pray that you would be with each decision that's made, God, each subject that's talked about. God, we pray that you'd get glory and honor through it all. Pray that once again that you'd be with our community and our parents and our kids and faculty and staff and everyone that has a hand in our school system. God, we pray that safety, God, would be cast over them and a hedge protection builder. And, Lord, once again, that you would go with us and be with us and be with every decision that's made from here on out. And, Lord, we hope that you get the glory and honor and praise that you so rightly deserve. Lord, we ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. First item, approval of agenda. Do you have additions to that?
I don't know that we really have any additions other than we had to change some things around from when we sent this out to you earlier, Mr. McKinney, because our auditors have been able to be with us this evening, and this is a kind of a spur of the moment decision. We were waiting on the local government to approve all of the information, and they did today. And so, these fellows flew in on their Learjet so that they could speak with us. So, we changed some things around. And there were also some additions to the personnel, and those should be reflected in your updated agenda there. And we're going to move public comment back up towards the top to right after when our auditor speaks to us.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or changes? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
It's moved.
All right, those in favor, show your hands. All right. Now, let's get to the items we're here for.
Well, every month, we try to bring someone in to celebrate, and Swain County Schools has a lot to celebrate. We're just a little bit behind, and I'm sorry that I've allowed us to get there. But this afternoon or this evening, I want you to notice that we have several young men and their families sitting, and these are the members of our conference champion soccer team for Swain County. And this is the second year in a row, if I'm not mistaken, that they have received that recognition and that honor. So, I would love for them to be introduced perhaps by their coach. And then, at the end, Scott, we have just a very small memento for each person to take with them. I think the greater thing, Scott, is that we are incredibly proud to have you here tonight and of the accomplishments that your teams have made recently.
We appreciate it.
It might be best if you come up here to the microphone so that anybody who might be watching on the Maroon Devil Network, and if you want to pull that mask off while you're speaking so that they can see your beautiful face.
I'm not so sure about that one now. Well, it's a great group of young men that we have here. I mean, this is one of the teams that, over the past, you know, I've coached for five years now at the high school level, and this group of young men, it's just, they have truly came together as a team. It's probably been the most cohesive team that I've ever coached before, and it has truly shown as far as how well they work together in practice, how well they work together in games. And it was just a, it was a great season for them, for sure. And, I mean, we made it as far as we've ever made it before in the playoffs, and it was just, it was a great experience, I think, and I couldn't be more proud of this great group of young men. Do you want me to introduce them? Just have them come up, or how do you want me to do it?
There's a lot of us, so if you would introduce them, and as you introduce them, if they would stand and wave to the camera or something.
Okay. All right, let's see.
And they're saying, where's the camera?
Well, if you want them to come up here, they can.
That's fine, come on up here, bring them up here.
Come on up. I'll take it, Sue, so I have the last name right. All right, so we have, you guys come on up.
Wrap yourselves around up in there.
All right, we have Gavin Rowland, I'll just go down the list, Clayton Schuler, you guys can raise your hand.
Throw your hand up so we know who you are.
So, Gavin Rowland, there we go, Clayton Schuler, Revvis Robinson, Mason Devine, Levi Trantham, Maxwell Munt, Matthew Gray, Landon Matts, Owen Craig, Brendan Lanning, well, he's not here, Lucas Trantham, Spencer Rowland, Elijah George, Cannon Helpman, and Cameron Phillips. And then, we have some who were not able to be here. We have James Sanchez, Gavin Lanning, Jamie Al, Tali Goa Walker, Adam Cotterman, and Brendan Lanning. And that's, part of that's also the fact that we have players that also are doing other sports. I know we have some wrestlers here now, but we have some wrestlers who are not here, and then we have some that are playing basketball, JV and varsity, so they're not able to be here. So, but like I said, we couldn't be more proud of this great group of young men and all their accomplishments. They've, it's been, we've really enjoyed coaching them, for sure. Coach Blath and I have. It's a great group, so thank you, guys, for recognizing them also. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it. We have one of all because we know that you work so hard this morning. Well, usually, the coaches are working as hard as possible.
Congratulations, Scott.
I mean, we're so glad you could come and be with us because we're very proud of what you do. I saw so many games, I still, every time I see one of you running and kicking balls going sixty miles in the air, I can just see myself flat out on the field. I appreciate the athleticism of having that game.
Yeah, for the coaches, too.
Good job.
It's awesome.
Thank you, guys, for the first act.
Thank you all, thank you for your time tonight. And next month, I plan on having representatives from three different groups. So, we'll spread, and we might even spread it out through the agenda just a little bit, maybe, to make the meeting a little more enjoyable, rather than just work.
Well, we need that positivity thing, I think.
I think that's important for all of us, really is.
And we forget sometimes how many positive things we have going on. Hopefully, we'll get a positive audit report, too, so.
I think that you're going to get a positive audit report. The problem is, we're getting, we're getting used to that, you know? So, if you want to throw some lies in tonight, that way, next year, it can be.
All right, gentlemen, if you want, if you would, come on up and give us your audit report. You can take the mask off if you're speaking up there, too. It's hard to hear anything, Muffler.
Good evening. My name's Robert Brown. I'm with accounting firm Boggs, Crump &amp; Brown. I may have met some of you in the past and I may not, so we've been doing audit for several years. So, I'm here to present the June 30, 2021 audit, and I think I'll bring some good news, nothing bad. So, with that, I'd like to start on, just go through some of the highlights of our opinion letters. If you just look at the page right past the table of contents in the first, it's like the first page, it says, "Report on Financial Statements." Basically, what this is, is our audit opinion related to the financials, and I'll just go through some of the highlights in this report. So, if you just bear with me and start right there in the first paragraph, what it says is, "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Swain County Board of Education as of and for the year ended June 30, 2021." The second paragraph basically states management's responsibility. It says, "Management is responsible for preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements." And in paragraph three, "Our responsibility as auditors is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit." And so, if you look on page two, at the top, we express our opinion. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities in each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of Swain County Board of Education as of June 30, 2021." So, in other words, it's a clean opinion. It's good. I won't read through all that. You can do that at your own time. I'd probably bore you. So, what I like to do is go back, so that report covers the financials. I want to go back to the back on page 77, and as part of our single audit, we also do compliance audits in addition to the financial audit. So, these opinions back here relate to the compliance portion of our audit. The first report there on page 77 is basically, you know, "Our Report on Internal Control and Compliance Over Financial Reporting." And so, each one of these has a, has two separate categories. One's internal control over financial reporting, one's compliance and other matters over financial reporting. So, I can, I can say that we found no deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to internal control over financial reporting. And then, on page two, as it relates to compliance and other matters, you can see that last sentence on page 78 of the first paragraph, "The results of our test disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." So, a clean opinion as it relates to internal control and compliance over financial matters. Now, if you look with me on page 79, 79 is a "Report on Compliance With Requirements Applicable to Each Major Federal Program." So, this relates to each federal program that we audited this year. So, basically, what it says is, "As it relates to internal control, we found no instances of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to internal control over federal programs, major federal programs." And then, as it relates to compliance, if you look at the top of page 80, "In our opinion, the Swain County Board of Education complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June 30, 2021." So, in other words, another clean opinion. So, if you look with me on page 81, same compliance report, except this relates to the major state programs that we audited as major. Again, "We found no instances of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to internal control over, over major state programs." And also, on page 82, at the top of the page, is our opinion on the compliance aspect of this report. "In our opinion, the Swain County Board of Education complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major state programs for the year ended June 30, 2021." So, again, a clean opinion. If you look on page 83, if you look, 83 to 84, 85, basically just gives you a summary of what I just said about, you know, weaknesses and compliance issues, and there, you know, there's a no in each column, and it tells you what major, which programs we audited as major and which programs we audited as state over on page 84. So, those programs, those federal and state programs are the ones we audited as majors that those opinion letters apply to. And then, page 86 and 87 is a summary of all, is a schedule of your expenditure of federal state awards, basically just lists out all the federal and state awards you received this year or the year ended June 30, 2021. So, I will just take a moment to, if we can go to page 16 and 17. 16 and 17 is basically, is a statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance and the governmental funds. So, it's basically your typical income statement that you receive and see in a business. So, I'll just make a general comment about, about the year. So, if you look on page 17, under the general column and the special revenue column, special revenue column is basically your impact aid money that you receive. That's the majority of the money that goes through there. There's some other small federal grants, federal and state grants. But you can see down at the bottom, your fund balance, the $58,353 general fund, special revenue fund had a fund balance of $5,053,652. That was an overall increase of approximately $824,000 for the year, which is, you know, which is good. I mean, and, you know, I think a lot of that, you know, what drove that was, you know, a lot of the pandemic monies that came in during the year. So, we're, we're seeing that, you know, you see that all over the state and the other governmental units we audit. So, any questions so far about, I know Stephanie's probably talked with you about fund balance, but, so overall, your fund balance is $5,112,500 for the, you know, at the end of the June 30, 2021, which is, you know, certainly puts you in a solid financial position. One other thing I'd like to go over, would just briefly mention, just show you on page, I know I'm flipping back and forth, but page 76, we show the Food Service Fund is a separate fund. It's more or less a enterprise fund, operates more like a business. But this, this statement back here is more, you know, it's more in line with how you look at the governmental funds that we just looked at. So, I just wanted to show you, you see down there, kind of three quarters of the way down, your excess of revenues over expenditures is $262,049 this year compared to $333 last And let's go to one other thing, let's see. And then, on page 23, again, I apologize for skipping back and forth, but it's just the, basically, your child nutrition balance sheet for the proprietary fund, child nutrition The statement is on the full accrual basis, so if you're, generally, if you're looking at it from a fund balance standpoint, like we looked at the governmental funds a while ago, you basically take your current assets minus your current liabilities, and that's basically what your fund balance is in child nutrition funds, which is about $900,000, I think, or a million dollars, somewhere in there. It's probably about a million dollars. So, so I just wanted to mention that. It's not presented the same way that the governmental funds are because on a full accrual basis, that's the way the, that we have to show it on the full accrual. But if you're looking at it just for the fund balance of Fund Five or the Child Nutrition Fund, you know, it's around a million dollars. So, so to summarize, you had a clean report, clean opinions, and you're in a solid financial position as of June 30, 2021. So, any questions or comments about anything?
Thoughts? A lot of information.
Yeah, there's a lot of information in here, and it'd take a while to read through it, so I just try to do the highlights.
Appreciate it.
If you go through it and have any questions for myself, Stephanie can always relay those to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have any, do we have anybody signed up for public comment? All right, no public comment. I did have somebody ask me last week or within the last couple of weeks about wanting the board to know how much they really wanted a track, that somebody's got a track dollar that's in track, and how could they make that known? And I told them it was to let, you know, and we put them on the agenda of the public comment, if they want to bring some and have one speaker, they'd be treated in the other three minutes, the same thing.
Sure.
And it was a positive comment, it was positive, but I said, you know, it'd be good if you want to do that because we need the commissioner to know, too, that we have a large number of kids that are involved in that, and we don't have a place for them. All right, discussion items, the COVID reports first, I believe.
Amber Frost is now the Director of the Health Department, and she's not able to be here tonight. She called this morning and asked if I would share the information with you that she has given, and I handed out a colorful packet there for you, and you'll notice that since December the 13th, there have been almost 400 new positives, and I think that everyone is aware of that. And unfortunately, there have been some additional deaths that have been attributed to COVID as well. I think that at the bottom of the page, one of the pieces that is catching my attention is the fact that there seems to be more of a cluster of positive cases right now in the lower age groups. Now, we could probably reason that one of the reasons that might be happening is because of vaccinations and the percentage of individuals 50 years old and older who have participated in that. We're also noticing, though, that there has been an uptick in, in the number of staff and the number of children that are being affected by this. So, I believe that that's noteworthy. On the second page, you can also see some, some elements that you probably are already aware of. If you look at that graph, you can see the spike that's happened after January the 1st, and that's what we're dealing with at this point. And I think that we need to keep that in, in mind as we make decisions and move forward. At the bottom are vaccination numbers. I'm encouraged to see that, at the bottom, it says that the Swain population, at least 64% has received at least one dose, and I imagine, or I'm thinking, that that includes the boundary as well, but I know that there has been a strong push on the reservation for that. And fully vaccinated is 54%. Mister, or Dr. Sutton's going to speak in just a few minutes about where we are with that as a school system. I don't know what else to draw your attention to. I wish that Amber was here because she would highlight points. Is there, and I know that you haven't had a lot of time to look at this, is there anything that you, that's caught your attention right off the bat? As far as our school system is concerned, what we are experiencing right now is very similar to what we experienced in the month of September, and that kind of tracks along with the graph that you saw a few minutes ago because that was the last spike that we lived through. Last week was a challenge for our, our principals and our staff, and I was thankful that we were able to take Friday to give everyone a little bit of a chance to get better. We had 25 teachers, instructors, that were out, and that's just instructors because of various things, and about 60% of that was COVID-related. Being able to get through the weekend has allowed the quarantine cycle to work its way out, and today, we had about 10 staff members who are instructional that were out, and many of them are different than last week. So, that means that we have a different group that we're dealing with. What's important to me is the fact that the numbers are smaller with our staff on that. We struggle to find substitutes to get into those positions, and we've had staff that have been double covering, our teacher assistants that have been covering in classrooms, and Tricia Chapman, who I think is here, Tricia has been more teacher than director in, in the past two or three weeks of school for that very reason. You'll notice at the bottom of the page that our attendance percentages for last week, which is the second column, are very similar to September, and you'll notice that today, in some places, our attendance percentage is lower than it was last week. So, that means that it's, this is still affecting our students in a substantial way, in my opinion. Do you have any questions about those numbers or anything that you want to draw attention to?
No, I, I just want to point out, I don't know if people understand, too, I know we're trying to protect kids, parents, our teachers, but you pointed out, one of the things that we're concerned about is if our number of absenteeism with staff, faculty, bus drivers, et cetera, gets too high, we have to shut down because we don't have the staff and we don't have the substitutes. So, it's bigger than just the sickness, it's a, it's something that just closes something down completely. And just to plug in for the shots, I did see one report said that, that if you were, got shot and had the booster, you had a better chance of being struck by lightning than dying, and that came from the CDC, so, based on their latest reports that they found, so that helps us, too, to keep open.
Well, in, in that vein, Mr. McKinney, Mr. Dr. Sutton has helped arrange a booster clinic for this Friday because this Friday is an early release for students, and we have arranged so that any staff member that wants to go get a booster at that time can do that, and it'll give them the weekend to deal with whatever type of an effect that has on them. Plus, next Monday is a holiday for Martin Luther King Day, so that gives everyone an opportunity to get back to full strength if, if they should happen to want to be part of that. Of course, that booster can only happen if you've had the full series in six months ago or more, okay? Anything else before we turn it over to Dr. Sutton because he's going to go over what the new protocol is from Strong Schools Toolkit? Anyone? Dr. Sutton, would you bring us up to date, please, sir?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to go into detail with the changes because it's so particular with, if you're an ongoing exposure at a home setting, there's so many what ifs that you have to work through to determine exactly what your quarantine will look like. But having said that, it's, it's changed from 10 to five days for a lot of exposures. You've got to wear a mask days six through 10 if you've been exposed, but you only have to quarantine for five. School settings, if you're wearing your mask appropriately, there's no need for quarantine. Let's see. If you are fully vaccinated with your booster, or if you're fully vaccinated and not eligible for the booster yet, I think it's a six months, you have to, you can get your booster six months after. Speaking of boosters, we will have that this Friday. Blue Ridge Health is coming to the middle school. They have 30 doses. Staff can pre-register with them. We also, you can also go to Walgreens and, I believe, Bryson City Pharmacy if you're interested in your booster or just getting your vaccination period. Let's see, is there anything? They've given a lot more if then, if you've got a positive antigen test with no symptoms and... And I just, school nurses and myself, we keep this on our desk, because there's so many what ifs you have to work through, you know? Are you an ongoing exposure? Were you able to isolate yourself from the sick person? When was the first symptoms noticed? When was the positive test date? There's a lot of questions that you have to work through, and it's just easier to do that in conversation.
I provided the little, the short sheet that he was, that Dr. Sutton was showing you as the third and fourth page of that handout.
Yeah, Mark just, Mark took the full guidance and summarized it a little bit and took some words out, so it's a little bit quicker to look over. So that would give you an overview, and I think this is something we're going to share with all the staff.
Yes, we'll send it out tomorrow.
But that was really, the only changes in the document came to, came about quarantine in the suspecting cases of COVID-19.
One of the key pieces in the documentation that we have seen, that I have seen, is that does center around the five days piece, has to do with, in a mask-required setting, there is one opportunity, but in a mask optional setting, that opportunity goes away. And you can see that at the bottom of the third page there. In a mask-required setting, students don't have to be excluded if they have no system, no symptoms. If they test on the day of the notification and it's negative, and then they test again on day five or thereafter, and it's negative, they don't have to quarantine. But that's only in a mask-required setting, okay? And what that basically means is if we continue to be in the same position, or you choose to be in the same position with masks in the schools, that applies, okay? So that's something to consider. If you choose to not do that, then if someone is a close contact, they are immediately quarantined for five days. It's a mask optional setting, all right? Questions or thoughts about that?
I think we got to do it. Just make sure it's followed.
The mask mandate that you all voted for in December and in November and the previous months is in the consent agenda. If you choose to bring that out, we can, if you want to operate in a different direction. That'll be your decision.
I don't personally see any need to change, because I think it's too complicated to change at this point. If the rest agree, then just go ahead and leave it in consent.
I agree.
We're all hoping for a window somewhere, maybe that window will eventually come. Right now, it's just too dangerous.
Mr. McKenney, those are all of the elements of the discussion outside of closed session that we have listed. So at that point, we can either go to closed session if you choose to, or we can move into personnel and take action.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move to the Board of Education, going to closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record under North Carolina statute 143, 318.1181.
Second.
Second. All in favor, stand up and we'll go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Kelly Phelps as E.C. teacher at Swain East Elementary effective January 21, 2022.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Shalina Cochran as reading teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Gladys Waldroop as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective January 3, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Tiffany Taylor as interim elementary education teacher at Swain West Elementary effective January 3, 2022. That is for maternity leave.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kayla McMahon as a bus driver effective December 13th, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Tim White as cafeteria substitute effective January 3rd, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Amy Smith as COVID coordinator effective January 10th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deborah Sutton as the school nutrition assistant program manager effective January 11th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Candace Dewantara as a temporary EC teacher at Swain East Elementary effective January 22nd, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. All right, motion carried.
Mr. Dills has Cody's background. Okay. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Cody Tisotewski as reading teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective January 12th, 2022.
Second, motion moved.
Let's do both.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Neil Blankenship as varsity head football coach effective January 4th or 2nd? January 2nd, 2022. That's a misprint there.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands.
Do we need to add, please, Scotty McMahon? And I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Scotty McMahon as offensive coordinator for football coach effective January 10th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
There's also a misprint on line, on number 12, and it's my fault. It should be a Level 2 volunteer. And for clarity, a Level 2 volunteer goes through background checks and is a much more extensive vetting process, and there's a level of training that goes along with that. A Level 1 volunteer cannot be left alone with students. A Level 2 volunteer has a little more freedom, okay?
Okay.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the following as Level 2 volunteers. Kay McConnell, Janie Lurch, Becky Painter, Janet Clapp Saddle, and Boyd Wright. All of those are connected with C for C, okay?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda that includes the masking mandate, as we have stated it in the past, okay? And the minutes of the December 13th, 2021 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve Policy 4060 Native American Policies and Procedures, and that was pending our public comment period this evening, which has come and gone now.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands.
Can I say something? I was here at 5:45 for that meeting. Nobody said anything to me about it. I was sitting here, and somebody said something about a 6 o'clock meeting. I didn't know. This is my first time here.
Oh, okay.
Please excuse me, I didn't know the process. But nobody said anything to me or anything about it, and I didn't even say anything.
Well, there was an announcement at the beginning by Mr. McKinney.
Right. And I was waiting for something to happen. Questions or something to go over? I have no idea.
Well, I apologize. You have something, we can hear that.
No, I thought we were going to go over something. Did you have something to pass out or talk about?
No, we just, we listen for any comments or anything anybody has any concerns about, and that's it.
I'd just tell you, I think you're doing a great job with our board members. I have a 10th grader going through your process right now, 10th grade.
Okay.
And I have a son, William Paul, who went through your program.
That's your William's dad?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's in Marine Corps, going to grade right now.
I was going to ask you about that. I remember that.
And I'm just pleased that he went through your program. I can't say much good things about you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And if you would like to sit down at any point with me and look at that policy and go over the finer points of it, I'd be happy to schedule your time for that.
No, I'm fine with everything you guys are doing. Thank you.
Appreciate your strength.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. McKinney, those are all of the personnel items. If everyone will look at Section C of the FYI, there are several individuals that are being transferred into different places. You can see that Julie Bennett is being transferred into an EC teacher assistant position, and that's at West Elementary. Correct? Yes? Okay. John Roper is going to be transferred from Swain West to an EC teacher position, teacher assistant position at East Elementary. Brandon Burdette, who has been down with some physical concerns, is now able to come back, and he's going to be the New Century Scholar and online facilitator at the high school, which is going to free up some of the things that, some of the people that have been kind of locked into that classroom. And then Sherri Clure, who has been working as Jennifer Brown's assistant in the central office, is now going to be cafeteria manager. Is that correct? Cafeteria manager at Swain West Elementary. Okay? And that position was freed up because the previous cafeteria manager is now going to be Ms. Brown's assistant. There's been some switching there, and that's at Ms. Clure's request. Okay? Now, Mr. McKinney, I would ask you to consider two things. We have the opportunity, and according to board policy, to have small committees. We have a large number of board policies that are getting ready to come through. I would like, if you would please, to pick a couple of board members, just two, so that we don't have to call a meeting, to sit down with me and as board representatives, look at some of those policies before we bring them in for the first reading. I'm fine with whoever those two are, but that's going to take some additional time.
Right.
Because I've got about 60 policies right now sitting in a book, and I know that everybody doesn't want to sit down and look at all of those. And the other thing, we've got to continue moving forward with our facilities, study, and planning. I believe that it would be good for us to have a small committee to work on that quite a bit in the next four to six weeks, so that we can be prepared in March to take a presentation to the commissioners. That's when we normally will make our budget requests, and we need to be prepared by then. Otherwise, we're going to have to call meeting after meeting after meeting. So would you please consider a couple of small committees, facilities and board policies? Okay? And you don't have to do that tonight, but at some point.
Well, I encourage you to think about which one you want to set on.
I'll take facilities.
All right.
Sorry.
You want to say all this?
Two of us.
Two of us. All about board. These are two attorneys for the board policy.
Speak up a little quicker.
Are you sure that's what you want?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I am.
I'll be happy to do whatever I'm needed to do. Yep.
And I want you to notice, I want you to notice that the chairman didn't get on any of them.
I personally looked both ways.
Isn't that, isn't that the beauty of being a chairman?
I remember that next time we got another tough committee, see how quick I get, come out there. It's about town, hold you down, get moving.
I did knock on his stable legs off.
Thank you.
There are January calendar of events there. Our next board meeting is on February the 14th. I don't know if we'll need to have a special call meeting between now and then. I don't project that we will. Okay? February the 14th, which is Valentine's Day. If you want to reschedule it so that you can take your Valentine out. Okay? Also need to make everyone in the community aware that this is National School Board Appreciation Month, and you have heard from the community in the last two meetings that you are appreciated. You have served in some very difficult times, and I appreciate it. Our community appreciates that, and I would appreciate it if you would eat that food back there, because if you don't, we're going to have to take you downstairs. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all that I have. That's all that's on here.
All right. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second. All in favor, just stand up and adjourn.